Good evening. Today is Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are at Connors Elementary School, and we will call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will start committee member introductions with Councilor Harriman.
Scott Harriman, City Council Representative to the School Committee.
Donna Galant, Ward Seven.
Megan Heard, Ward Six.
Iman Osman, Ward Five.
Craig Shopmans here, Ward Four.
Elizabeth Eames, Ward Three.
Janet Bowden, Ward Two.
Phoenix McLaughlin, Ward One.
Megan Parks, at Large.
Gia Langlis, Superintendent.
Karen Pocat, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Three is to receive and potentially vote on the nomination for Amy St. Pierre for the Special Ed Assistant Principal Position at Connors.
So I'll ask Principal Deb Rodri and Assistant Director Michelle Winslow to come up to give us an introduction to Amy, who is the nomination for the new Assistant Principal here at Connors.
Right here. See, I got it right this time. Third time is a charm. Such a different perspective here. Usually it's lunch duty and getting ketchup and picking up some messes. So nice. Different perspective standing here. I don't have my students in here. So I am so excited to introduce to you. Whoops, you're not her.
You're her.
Amy St. Pierre, another Connors champion, and I'm going to tell you my why. There are many qualities about Amy that make her a great fit for our Connors team. She deeply values the importance of building positive relationships with students, families, and community stakeholders, always keeping students' best interests at heart. She understands the importance of collaboration and empowering others to achieve their personal best. She also has a lot of experience in providing professional development to staff and helping educators find opportunities for growth within themselves. And we all need that push sometimes. And working as a team and having a strong team to work with is very important to Amy. And she's talked a lot about that through the interview. And she wants to be part of that team. And as you know, when I became principal at Connors, that's been a goal of mine, is to establish strong teams, not just administratively, but strong teams within the school. It's very important to me, and we are on our way for that. And I'm very proud of the work that we've done. And I know that Amy will be a wonderful asset to our team. She is committed to professional development opportunities and providing those opportunities that support staff and lift educators because, as you may remember, that's why I'm in education. I will always say I'm an educator because it's about lifting others up and finding the potential in each and every one of our educators. She also recognizes a critical role in of data and informing instruction and improving teaching practices. And when I think of Amy, I was trying to think, okay, three words. What can I say about Amy? I think of engaging, dynamic, and curious. Because being curious promotes personal growth and exploring new ideas and possibilities. I'm always thinking about what we can do more for Connors, what's best for Connors. And we need creative thinking, and we need problem solving. And that's Amy. And as you know, I talk about champions because we are champions. And when Amy said, I am their biggest champion, that really resonated for me. And then on my slides, you'll see out and about, I always say, in it together, together is always better. And when she said, in this job, you have to be in it together because we can't do this alone. So. Thank you.
Did you want to speak? Or Michelle first?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a few words from the special education team. We're really excited about the level of experience Amy has and would bring to the team in regards to her leadership, as well as her passion for inclusion. And that's something that that really resonates with us and something that we really strive to accomplish. So we're excited.
Thank you. Amy, did you want to share anything before we vote, or do you want to wait till after we vote?
Sure. I'm Amy St. Pierre. I've been in education for twenty-five years in lots of different realms. I was born and raised in Lewiston, went through the Lewiston School System, so I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to return back home.
Thank you. Did you have anything to share? Nope. Is there a motion? Member Heard?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the nomination of Amy St. Pierre for the Special Education Assistant Principal Position for Connors Elementary School.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Agenda Item Number Four is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like set aside? Member Galant?
Not so much set aside, but this includes the nutrition policy. Is that what? Or is that another?
No, that's non-agenda item number eight.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the nutrition policy that was that was done is really good. I was able to read it today and felt that it was done very well. It's very succinct. It's shorter. And just thank you for doing that, whoever was doing that.
So it doesn't look like anyone means anything can set aside on the consent agenda, so that is adopted. Agenda Item Number Five is public input. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on non-agenda items now and on agenda items later. Comments that pertain to staff personnel matters or a student issue should be directed to the superintendent or the appropriate staff member of Lewiston Public Schools. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief, not repetitive, and related to the matter at hand. Before starting, please state your name, address, and affiliation with Lewiston Public Schools. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Good evening. My name is Alan Sarvenus. I live in Topsom with my beautiful wife and two young boys. Tonight, I come speaking for Parents' Rights in Education, which we have many families in the district now that we are speaking for who believe themselves are the primary stakeholders in their education and not the government. First up, my testimony is following up on last month's, when I was here. I mentioned a petition, but the state government cannot answer exactly how they're going to vet the law that they wrote in terms of registered voters. So instead of wasting people's times, I'm still waiting on the Secretary of State's office and rulemaking from the Department of Education to provide us guidance so we can execute that petition. Two, my main reason coming from last time was getting more texts and calls from teachers in your district and parents about behavior, about the unsustainability of some of the classrooms. And when I was here, board members talked about the language that was being used toward teachers. And my comment was, and somewhat throwing a bone to the superintendent, saying there's stuff coming down from the federal and state level that makes it almost impossible to run your district. In front of you, I gave you a Parents Defending an Education legal letter. It's a brief in a letter form requesting that the current administration withdraw or rescind the Dear Colleague Letter sent down by the previous administration. This is an interpretation of Title VI. An interpretation is the key word because if you believe in local control, that means this board can interpret the way that best fits Lewiston School District, and you can ask a task or ask your superintendent to carry out and enforce Title VI in the way that you want it to in your school district. And then I'm going to just read this written testimony. I appreciate your time, Chairwoman, Board Superintendent, Chairwoman Parks, Lewiston Public School Board Directors, and Superintendent Langlis. I am Alan Sarvenus, Main State Director of Parents' Rights in Education. I am testifying on behalf of many Lewiston families who believe parents, not the government, are the primary stakeholders in their children's upbringing, education, and well-being. I urge you to act independently and correct the harmful policies imposed by the previous federal administration. These policies outlined in this Dear Colleague Letter provided in front of you threaten the very foundation of your schools. One, they are illegal. The letter exceeds the Department of Education's authority. It's unconstitutional and is a root cause for many of your teachers' despair. Two, they are unfair. They force schools to abandon equal-handed policies that promote student safety and learning. Undermining teachers' authority at a critical time, allowing your employee, the superintendent, to execute judgment based upon immutable characteristics directly harms every student. Three, they are counterproductive. Emphasizing racial balance and discipline, even at the expense of actual safety and order, creates a hostile work environment for teachers and interrupts your students' fundamental right to a productive learning environment. I urge board directors to prioritize the well-being of your students and teachers and reject these harmful and unconstitutional Department of Education directives.
Thank you, Mr. Sarvenus.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is to receive Lewiston Public Schools' recognition.
So a couple of recognitions tonight, but Austin's going to see if he can help me with audio connected to a video that I told him I wouldn't need, but I actually do. So we're going to do our very best. Just blame me, not Austin, if it doesn't come out well. I'm going to just run the video if you want to change that setting.
Lewiston Public Schools is the second-largest school district in the state of Maine.
For Maine, we're more urban for our state, but compared to other places in the country, we might still be considered rural. I would say twenty-ish years ago, the population started to shift with immigrants and refugees coming from different parts of mostly African countries and mainly Somalia.
Our downtown area is full of shops from different cultures. We've got Somali shops. We've got Ethiopian restaurants. We've got Mexican restaurants. We've got all sorts of community centers and events and people.
We're very unique because we're one of the most ethnically and linguistically diverse districts. Around thirty-three percent of our students are identified as multilingual learners. We have forty-two different languages represented district-wide, with our most common languages other than English being Somali, Portuguese, French, Swahili, Kenyatta, Spanish, and Arabic.
All of our staff is dedicated. They're here because of their love of kids. You're not going to find another district like ours in the area.
Our staff come to work every day, making sure that they create an environment that our students can thrive.
A lot of resources in our country are for students who are maybe dual-language learners of Spanish and English. When you have forty-plus languages in your district, the Spanish version of something is not going to be helpful.
A lot of these kids have never been in school, so it's not only learning a new language, but it's also learning what it means to be in school in America and what that expectation and routines and all of that look like.
We also have a lot of brand-new staff who are new to the field. And so we really have to find ways to prepare those staff, give them the information that they need without overwhelming them. We realized that we needed to do something to support not only the teachers, but the students. We believe in inclusion, and we have our multilingual learners in the Gen Ed setting as much as possible, if not for their entire day.
It's important that we have multilingual learners stay in the core classroom because it benefits everyone. It benefits the multilingual students because they have more access to English language, both social and academic. And it benefits our English language speakers because they have access to a whole other world of information that they wouldn't get otherwise.
And so we realized that not only did our ESOL teachers need the specific training, but we needed to provide Gen Ed and Special Ed teachers with tools that they could use to help our multilingual students access their education in the Gen Ed setting as well. One of our district's goals is to focus on equity. And so PSYOP is one of the many ways that we are highlighting equity. PSYOP is the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, which is a framework for lesson planning and delivery that supports both content and language growth within each lesson. And so there are eight different components and thirty different features that teachers have to learn about and implement into their lessons. And so as they become more proficient in the components and features, they're able to apply them into their lesson planning, considering how do we build language and content simultaneously so that we're all responsible for supporting language for all students.
PSYOP is just good teaching. It's what we should be doing to help all of our students, not just our ML students. It really focuses on building the background knowledge and the foundation, and then meeting each kid where they're at. So it's not me talking at them all class. I'm, I talk very little at the beginning and then try to let them kind of get their hands dirty and get into the material. It's just good, good teaching. I feel, it's nothing extra.
By incorporating the PSYOP framework and making this a district-wide expectation of how we teach our students, we're able to level the playing field for our multilingual students by providing that additional support through best practice and the PSYOP framework. And so we created a multi-year plan to implement PSYOP. In the first year, all staff were trained in initial PSYOP training, but we created a multi-year plan so that every year, when we hire new staff, we're able to get them trained and caught up as well. So it couldn't just be this one-and-done style training. It had to be ongoing.
Every teacher that is hired has to go through the PSYOP training so that they can just understand better how ML students learn, and then they can help meet their needs. So everybody is trained in PSYOP. Then we have professional development throughout the year that's focused around PSYOP. We meet with our curriculum groups and really try to focus on, here's our content, but how can we make it accessible to everyone? So there's a huge focus on that.
So each year, we revisit the plan. We look at what we've done, where we're going.
We've been able to offer courses and training to staff that they might not normally have access to if they were in other parts of the state, which then helps teachers become certified in the areas that we need. So we've tried to find ways that will allow staff to take advantage of opportunities that they might not have known about, or we try to bring them, bring those opportunities to the staff to help with that challenge.
Beyond that, we worked with our administrators to identify walkthrough tools to provide feedback on PSYOP implementation. We did that cross-building so that our administrators could practice identifying the the components and features and providing feedback to have staff become more proficient in applying those. And we do that every year, multiple times a year. So it gives us as administrators the opportunity to learn from one another, but also to learn from our staff and what they're actually doing. Each year, we've exited more students out of our multilingual program, which occurs when they demonstrate proficiency on our annual language proficiency assessment. We're seeing an increase of student interaction, student-to-student discourse regularly in classrooms. And a lot of that has to do with the PSYOP framework.
Kids are able to interact with each other and just talk more, which is going to help their language development. It's also helped them kind of accept each other more. When they get a newcomer that comes in their classroom who doesn't speak any English, but speaks the same home language as them, they're like so empowered to help this student learn and do what they're supposed to do. Someone in my daughter's class, like she rides the bus with a newcomer student that they have who only speaks Dari, and every single day, they hold hands to the bus. And they don't speak the same language at all. They just are on the same bus. And so it really gives like kids who were previously newcomers, it gives them this like empowerment to help newer newcomers figure out the road. So that's been really, really cool to see.
Every day, every minute of every day, there's good things happening in our schools that we take for granted, that that's just the way we do business. We have kids that are amazing. We have staff that's amazing. We are a community who is strong. So yeah, pretty proud.
Testing. Thank you, Austin, for your help with the audio. I just have three more videos in a few minutes. We did also share in the packet that SAVIS, or SAVIS, is an organization that focuses on multilingual instruction and support for multilingual educators and students. Lewiston Public Schools has done district-wide training with a commitment to enhance language learning for all students. As a side note, one of the bigger groupings of students who struggle with literacy are also generational poor white males. And so these strategies are not just about newcomers, it's about language acquisition and literacy. And due to this ongoing commitment, we've seen gains in our students at a far greater rate than in years past. This has been considered a success story by SAVIS, and they have created this promotional content as well as the website pages to recognize Lewis Public Schools and also to share the success stories. We're proud of the efforts to train staff, support the instruction, and the results we're seeing. And then there are links to the articles if anybody's looking for those included. But I'd like to see if Liza would come up to the podium to just be recognized for her ongoing push and effort to support our kids on, in every platform, and just to say, thank you, and great job.
Well, I didn't know I was coming here to be recognized, and I don't think that's fair to take the credit because it wasn't just me. The only reason that this has been so successful is because it's been a district-wide push to make it successful. And this isn't a multilingual office thing or a multilingual office initiative. This is just how we do teaching and learning, and that's why it's been ingrained in everything that we do. So I appreciate that, but I will pass that thanks on to everybody else.
Any questions on anything while Liza's here?
Just a lingo question. What are walkthrough tools? I don't know what that is.
So they're teacher observation and feedback tools. So as part of our teacher evaluation system, we've created some non-evaluative tools that we use to give feedback on PSYOP and implementation of PSYOP.
I still don't know what that means.
So we, when an administrator goes into a classroom or a group of administrators, which, which we do often, will have a form that we fill out that is highlighting some strengths and areas for reflection that are specifically related to implementation of PSYOP, as well as other teaching practices.
All right. Thank you again.
Thanks.
The next one we have, if Jen Tyner would come up to the podium for a quick recognition. Jen also loves these moments. I don't have a video, but there's been lots of posts about certain things. But we received a letter informing us that Hub Six is an adult education top performer. And we just received these results and want to celebrate the work of our adult education leadership for their work. A top performer is a program that has met or exceeded the state target in measurable skills gains and other performance targets. And Hub Six is essentially Jen and her team, as well as some area communities. And just wanted to take a moment to thank you and honor you and your team's work for having this recognition come from the state for your great work.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here and proud to be here for this, for this recognition. And really, like Liza said, I'm here representing adult education in Lewiston and Auburn. But really, the, the thanks goes to the team, all of their hard work, helping to make all of these outcomes and benchmarks a reality. For many of you, I don't know if you all know that the hub structure is really a regional approach to adult learning. So Lewiston and Auburn is part there. We are part of Hub Six, which is all of the adult education programs within Andrews Goggin and Oxford Counties. So we actually meet every month. We try to align our programming so that when students end up either moving or going to another program, that they're able to sort of just pick up and seamlessly continue with their educational progress. I did want to take just a minute because, you know, you put a mic in front of me and I can't just walk away. But I just wanted to share a couple of things specifically about the benchmarks that we have, that we have met. So the state of Maine determines that there are four benchmarks that all of our adult education programs are measured by. One is wanting to show an increase in enrollment. And the state target for the adult education hubs is to increase enrollment by ten percent every year. Well, if you listened last year and you paid attention this year, you know that Lewiston by itself had more than surpassed the ten percent increase in enrollment. We more than doubled last year. So we actually saw a fifty percent increase in enrollment in just Lewiston Adult Education. So that says a lot about the numbers of people that we're serving. The, the other targets include a post-test rate. So we use our CASIS assessment. It's a state summative assessment that we use to pre-test and post-test to show measurable skill gains. And the state really wants us to be looking at a sixty percent target. Lewiston surpassed that target with a little over seventy percent post-test rate for all of our students. And then the big one is really the measurable skill gain. That's how we know that our students are making progress in the continuum of learning against the state standards. The measurable skill gain goal that the state sets annually is thirty-nine percent. So thirty-nine percent of the students will make a form of skill gain. And in Lewiston, we were up above forty-four percent for the year last year. And that includes forty-three high school graduates and a hundred and eleven workforce credentials of value that we awarded in our, in our local program. So I wanted to make sure to talk about that. The fourth benchmark is one that we The fourth benchmark is one that we are unfortunately not typically able to meet. It is called the data match. The state sets a 90% target for a data match, which basically means that the Department of Education and the Department of Labor are working together to make sure when credentials of value are awarded, that people can then go to work. The biggest barrier that we have for that is not all of our students are eligible for social security numbers. And that's how the data match is calculated. So right now with our demographics, we, we won't likely meet that benchmark, but we are still high performing because we've met three out of the four. So I just wanted to share that really good news with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Agenda item number seven is budget items for Articles six, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
So we're going to start with slides from our respective areas tonight. And then we will transition to my budget overview slides afterwards. And up first, we have IT Director Mark Roke.
Good evening, everyone. First, thank you for all of your support and efforts. We all know that these budget decisions are really challenging. And all of you taking the time to look at our presentations is really meaningful to us. I have eight slides for you tonight. We won't spend a lot of time on the content of the slides. I'll talk a little bit about them. It's my intention that the slides will be informative for you in your later reading and research about the budget. There's a small plus symbol next to a couple of the numbers there. And that's because the number of teaching and learning applications is 33 that we pay for, but many more that are freely available that teachers are using. And the same thing for enterprise software. By enterprise, I mean the software that we use to run the business, the software that we use to run the buildings. Next slide, Jay. This slide shows our structure for the information technology department, as well as some departments that we work closely with, data services and technology coaches. Of note on this slide is the, there's a Venn diagram there showing knowledge domains for technologists, for technology coaches, and for teaching in the classroom, and how they overlap and work together. So our technical coaches do a great job of bridging the gap of the details of technology. And you're going to see how complex some of that is in just a little bit here. And that's an amazing part of the work that they do. And the picture that's on that slide is a professional development session with our technology coaches. Under bright spots, our coaches are really well-connected in their various communities and schools. Not only are they acting here on many of their, with many of their colleagues and acting in the classroom, actually having students working with technology, but they're working in other places too. Next slide. So for our help desk services team, we have a huge number of devices that we manage. We manage almost 15,000 devices on this team. But this summer, this previous summer alone, going into fall, they swapped out 520 devices for teachers and 2,270 devices for students. And that's really a times two number because they had to take an old device back and put a new device out. And the logistics and the technical skill it took to accomplish that is really remarkable. It's really quite a team. Next slide. Our network and infrastructure, server infrastructure team, they also do a tremendous amount of work. They're involved in really the engine room of IT, how everything is interconnected together. They manage almost 1,500 devices. That's wireless access points, network switches, video cameras, door controls, that sort of thing. A really big win for them this year was we applied and were awarded the COPSS grant. That's a grant from the community-oriented policing services that allows us to build out our camera and door access control infrastructure. The grant this year of $500,000 are going to help us with cameras and doors at Geiger, LHS, LMS, and Montello. Next slide, Jay. Unique to Lewiston Public Schools across this state and in many other states is that we've come to a point where we have a cybersecurity manager. And that's really important for us in a number of ways. First, we have an incident response plan. And we've had to exercise that incident response plan no less than 12 times this year. Really a strong response and working together with Jake and our other leaders, we've been able to respond quickly to cyber incidents. And our cybersecurity manager is here, John Hopkins. He's really connected and well-respected in the cybersecurity community. He works with Meta. He works with CISA. That's the Cyber and Infrastructure Security Agency for the federal government. Meta is the main educational technology directors association. And they know John well because of the work that he's done. And data services, bright spot. Data Services has been doing an amazing job over the years of collecting data. But where they're really focused now is on turning that data into information. We've been investing in a number of tools and a number of projects that help us visualize data more clearly to help us make decisions about budgeting in education. And the final slide, Jay. So there are a few challenges here. I'm really only going to talk about the last two, print management and software support. Because they're some of the biggest challenges. And that sort of blobby looking thing up there with all the arms on it, that's for the software support. And we're going to show you more about that in just a second. I want to talk to you about print management. We just invested in a transition to PaperCut and into Conica copiers. PaperCut is allowing us to gather statistics more completely on our print usage. And that's a big cost savings for us in the district as we analyze and do better with paper. So in the last three weeks, we've printed over 700,000 pages for classrooms and for business operations. Adam and his team have done a great job working with IT to make as many of the business processes paperless as possible. There's always going to be a place for printing in education, particularly in the classroom, particularly in color in the classroom. But there's a lot of places where we can make that more efficient. Now to the big blob that's on the screen and to software support. I'm giving out a paper detail. It's a mind map of all of the software that we use at Lewiston Public Schools. And this is why this is a challenge. I fully realize that what you're looking at is fairly abstract and a little esoteric. But what it does is it helps you visualize and connect how all of the pieces of software that we need to run our operation are connected together. Everything to the right of the little gray box is associated with our Google authentication. And so we're syncing and integrating Google authentication with those pieces. Everything to the left of the little gray box is a piece of software where we have to add and remove users as they come into the system. You can see that this is really quite a management task. And this is the budget challenge that I'm trying to get some help with. Not this year. It's not in this year's budget, but when you're looking out in the future, we do not yet have somebody at Lewiston Public Schools whose job description involves integrating the data and the users for all of these pieces of software. We sort of patchwork the work for working with the software between data services and IT. And what I would like to propose is that we have a systems analyst that does this. And that system analyst works for cybersecurity department because we need to know where the data is going and who is accessing it. And that's an incredible challenge when you see the patchwork of stuff that we do there. Also with us tonight, helping us hand this out, Tammy Thibodeau. She is our instructional specialist for technology and STEM. And everybody in the, in the structure diagram that's highlighted in green represents our leadership team. Tammy's done an amazing job helping us with those things. Does anybody have any questions about the little bit that we've seen?
Member Heard.
Thank you. So I don't know if you actually have control of this, but I told people I would ask because they saw that the IT portion of this was on the agenda tonight. But we have some families talk, I don't know if you've had any tickets or questions or concerns, but Talking Points is acting quite strange lately. And a lot of parents are getting kicked out. They can't get back in. They have to access, put in like a classroom code that they don't actually, the school doesn't actually have. And so they're not able to communicate back and forth with their teachers. Parents are not able. So I don't know if that's a you thing. I don't know if that's a Talking Points thing. I don't know if that's a school thing. I don't know. I don't know who takes responsibility for that.
I said to Mark just today, you can't walk by anyone.
We always get the side questions.
I actually haven't heard this. I don't know if you have.
Honestly, Member Heard, I, I have not heard this. And I would, we would, we would, when we receive tickets in our ticketing system, we are fairly responsive. You'll notice in the slides there, excuse me, that we closed just since August 1st, about 6,600 tickets this year. So the team's pretty responsive. It normally only takes a few days. I will, having heard that, go talk to our data services team, whom we partner with to manage Talking Points in the ML department and see if we can nail down where the issue is. I will also say to you, we are looking at improving that messaging structure in the coming year as another efficiency project.
Member Heard, do you know what schools you've heard this from parents from? Is it?
So it's McMahon. Austin, you're there all the time. So I'm going to put this on you. But yeah, I would just check with Charlotte. I know, I mean, in just the friend group that I have of parents, actually I'm the only one that hasn't had an issue. And they were like, is it because you're on the school committee? I was like, I swear. But yeah, they're not able, they're getting kicked out. They can't get back in. So it's important, especially, you know, teachers are sharing daily things. McMahon sending updates and things out all the time. Like they weren't actually able to register for parent teacher conferences because that comes out through Talking Point. So they can't, like that link comes out. And so people aren't, parents aren't getting that. So they're not able to register for parent teacher conferences that way.
Well, awesome use of the bully pulpit. We will look into that right away. Yeah.
Member Bowden?
Thanks. I just had a quick question with the data analyst. Is that what you?
Yes, it'd be a systems analyst looking at integrating the data and user accounts among all of those pieces of software.
Do you have any idea like about what that would cost the district?
Typically, it's about an $85,000 to $95,000 position.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Eames?
I'm curious about how the, the printing info. Now that you have PaperCut and you have data, how does that relate to cutting back on use of paper? All that does is document the use of paper. What's the next step?
It does a little bit more than that. I mean, I'm showing you the documenting of paper. It does record the types of documents that are printed. And it gives us an opportunity to have intelligent discussion around, well, you know, we, we did 700,000 pages. And maybe that's the price of doing business in education. We don't honestly know. But it will definitely help give us data to make better decisions and to evaluate processes that are maybe using a lot of paper, that particularly processes that are not teaching and learning.
Also have our pilot project.
Thanks. We also have a pilot project that we're going to be starting at Farwell, I think the end of this month, where with the iPads, we're training the teachers how to use the iPad with some different apps. Cami's one of them, where the students can do all of their work on, it's PDFs. It's basically annotating PDFs. Then they can send them back to the teacher like that. So they're cutting down on those. The tech coaches are really working with teachers with illustrative math. They can do their warm-ups and cooldowns that way, then submit it. And that cuts down on two pieces of paper for every teacher, every single class period. So we're trying to integrate more of the iPads where all students have them and using those to try to cut down on some of those pieces of paper that teachers are printing right now.
As someone who has a disability about reading screens, I was wondering if you have accommodations for those who can't.
Go ahead.
I'd say most definitely, I mean, anything that a student has with an IEP or, you know, parent preference or something like that, would definitely follow something like that. Yep. And a lot of the iPads also have a common accessibility features in them that you can use as well. But if none of that worked, then most definitely you could print something.
Just to add to, the PaperCut software is a shift from hitting print and going to find if you put it to the right printer or not to an ID process. So you scan your badge. And so I'm guilty of this. I'll blame myself and not use somebody else as an example. I hit print and I think it's coming up in my office and it's coming up next to Cheryl. And it didn't come up. So I checked the printer and I hit print again. And, and then she comes in and says, you got two copies of this. Did you want these right now? And it was just user error. Whereas when you use the badge, we're finding a significant reduction in misprinted items. So there's a savings in the paper use and things like that. That way, I think the other thing that's happening, and I'm not trying to be big brother about it, but when you have to use your ID to print, you might be more thoughtful about what it is you're printing. And so instead of saying, oh, I'll, I'll print 50 of these because I got two classes of 20 and I'll have 10 spare. You know, we could start to say, what are you printing? How much are you printing? Not, not necessarily scrutinize the, the need for printing, but we have a lot of stuff that sits on or next to a printer or goes right into a recycle bin. And it's chewing up toner, electricity, wear and tear of the machine and obviously paper. And so hopefully this will cut down further on that. And some of those statistics are actually more astronomical than what Mark shared because as we rolled this out or as they rolled this out, there were some hiccups. So there were some times when the printers were down and the server wasn't playing nice. And they've got most of that all worked out now. But imagine, I think in a two or three day swing, there was like 518,000 copies made in our district. And the printers happened to be down for some portion of each of those days as they worked out the little bugs of implementation. But that's just an astronomical amount of paper to, to run school. And we never had that number before, other than we need a new box. And, and so I think those data pieces help us just analyze what the usage is. Does it need to be that? But also helping with the printing things to their own printer and things like that.
Member McGiff.
Thanks. Of the coaching positions, I think I have the worst grasp of the technology coaching positions in terms of what they do. And I would appreciate maybe a bit better understanding of the day-to-day. I guess part of the, part of the question is, in my experience, I suppose, in other organizations, I, technology knowledge might come through group trainings or I'm just not sure kind of where the one-on-one instructional coach kind of framework fits into this type.
I'm going to preface that with just a sentence or two, but I'm going to hand it over to Tammy, who's the expert in the area. And I will say to you, many organizations have particularly commercial organizations, a role that each A role that each job has and a specific set of skills and IT that you teach that person to run that role. The really monumental factor in technology and education is taking your knowledge of technology. And marrying it usefully and effectively into a curriculum. And it's that piece right there that instructional technologists and tech coaches give us.
Um, I can give you some examples, I think, which may be helpful for you. Um, a tech coach and a literacy coach were working together with a teacher at McMahon and the class was reading Anne Frank. And so they were working together and they read the book and then the tech coach working with the teacher. Did some research and they took the VR goggles, um, Meta Quest goggles. And the students went through an experience on the Meta Quest goggles of what Anne Frank. Did when she was hiding um, during her time and they could go and they could sit underneath the stairwell. And they could go and investigate things and they could touch things and they could grab them and they could, you know, kind of experience that and so. They didn't just read the book, but then they got to go experience it as well to just understand that deeper. And so what um, the tech coach did was worked with the teacher on the technology, showing them how to use it because our goal is always. Get the teacher comfortable with it, so the next year they can do it themselves and then, you know, we can keep, you know, doing that knowledge. Another one, um, we have the merge cubes, which I think we had a teacher come and show. A teacher worked with a class where they were, you know, designing three D images on the merge cube, so it was. Working with the teacher and the students in the class of how to design those. And then again, next year or the next time that the teacher wants to use the merge cubes, they can take those and use them now because they know how to do that. Um, there's a lot of also though on the spot, they'll be walking down the hallway, somebody will say, geez, my projector's not working, so they'll just jump in really quick and help with that or something. They do full, full staff, you know, trainings at times, um, choice sessions. They did some choice sessions at the elementary schools and the tech ones were filled up immediately. Every time that they did them, they did them three times this year and they were filled up because teachers want tech training right now, they have all these resources. But there's just not a lot of time for training, so they filled up very quickly and. You know, people are always stopping me saying, you know, when can we get more training and it's just the calendar is not allowing a lot more training time, so. Um, the coaches have also offered time, you know, I've asked them to take a day, take a day and just offer during teachers prep times if they want to. Training on Google Classroom or whatever it is and so they'll just, you know, sit there and. Make it available to everybody that's in the building, if you want to come in, I'm going to be in this room and make it available. Um, but they work with teachers not as long of a time as a traditional coach. Because the technology doesn't typically last for six weeks, four to six weeks, but they may spend. A couple of weeks with a t- uh, teacher, making sure that everybody's comfortable with the technology, does that help?
Just real quick, where, where does the impetus for some of those individual? Uses and training of the tech come in, like with that Anne Frank example, is that? The teacher was like, man, the kids are just not clicking with this or something, we need something like, like where does that come from?
I think the teacher just wanted a, wanted to enhance the students' learning and wanted something that was engaging. And so they just sat down and brainstormed and just, you know, asked the tech coach because they have knowledge of other ways to do things. And so he just did some research and came up with that and presented ideas and that's what we always try to do though, is we don't go in and say, oh, do this. It's like, oh, here are some options that you could choose from, what would you like to do? We had, at the high school, we had a um, foreign language teacher that did escape rooms for their final exam. Uh, for the midterm exam, excuse me, and the kids absolutely loved it and they had to do each other's escape room and it was all done in that language that they were learning in the class. So it was just, it was non-traditional ways, but it was very engaging for the students and it was still learning and they really enjoyed it a great deal, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up we have transportation, article eight. And director, director Alyssa Roman is here to talk about her bright spots.
Hello, everybody. So I'm just gonna start, this is actually like my version of a bright spots because transportation and there's just a very, very small little. Picture there, I did not make a big printout like Mark did because it would, it would take up a lot of room, but we, we run a lot of routes in there, so. Right now we have me, Alyssa Roman, that's the director. I got a thing that popped up on here, hold on. Thank you, we have me, that's the director of transportation and nutrition, I have an assistant director in transportation, Kayla Denico. And then we have an administrative assistant um, that runs both nutrition and transportation, who is Jeannie Giroux. And trying to like, as I'm like working through like what, what transportation really does at the, the central office? Because I can't even begin to explain that just the three of us, there is no way just the three of us could possibly. Do all the nuances of transportation without the school's work, without the secretaries and our deans of students and everyone else getting us the data. So we are about as good as you where grandma lives and where dad lives and mom lives and what happens on Tuesday and Wednesday and if it rains out. And if I want to go here, so all of those nuances we collect. And I really mean it because Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it could all be a different plan, so we have some students that have over five dismissal plans. Um, we have one that maybe has a calendar, um, and so it's very complex for what we do. So when I added it up, I roughly got to around five hundred and something daily trips and I kind of stopped counting at that point. Um, but what that means for you guys is that, how do we do this all? Because no, I don't have a bus garage sitting on our property. And so we are contract right now, um, Hudson Bus Lines um, is our prime contract, we have them through next year. We also, because of our, our contract work, um, and knowing that there is a national driver shortage, so this isn't just affecting our community. We have said, what else can we do to meet the needs of our students, especially our contracts? Um, or our liabilities with our legal liabilities to get students there, so that includes. Our, our homeless students and um, special education students going to places outside of the city. And so with that being said, we also have various other contracts that we have coming and going from the district, some of them are just. Other vans going, but we have done that so we can get kids to school. And those are our alternative providers, so right now we're using one, two, three, I think roughly four alternative providers. And these are not Ubers, these are not taxi cabs, these are all vetted out through main DOE processes for background checks and all of that. So there is a criteria to even be able to do that. The other thing I wanted to talk about real briefly is we did release something called Stop Finder and not everyone in here is going to know what that is. Because if your child is on a route on one of those little dots, you got a notification to your prime email address. But if you do not take transportation with us, which affects almost twelve hundred students, you would not have gotten that um, notification. But what that enables is for parents to go in and create GPS locators around their house. Around their daycare, their work, wherever, and if you're really savvy, you can make the circle big enough so you leave work and the bus hits the. Radius at the right point and you meet at your kid's house or at your house and you can even label it whatever you want, so we do have families taking advantage of that. I can see um, the labels and then I can help move those if you moved and things like that. But it gives you up-to-date time of when your bus is in your neighborhood and allows you to make some predictive analysis on traffic patterns. Because that's the one thing I can't control in the city is if a street goes down or if there's an accident or a tree branch falls, we are rerouting. Um, so that has been really helpful and that will be really helpful for next school year as well, when parents are looking for where's my bus information. We plan on using that within the schools through the schools messaging. We are also using something called View Finder and this is something we've released for our school staff, so parents wouldn't necessarily know about this. But this is what I can give to other schools, our secretaries and um, key people that can have that data. That they can click on a student's name, there's a dropdown and all five dismissal plans are right there with your route, your stop and everything included. So we're making a really savvy database with that. I'm trying to work with our friends in IT to make that even more user friendly, this would be on the one that's not on the Google side, so I'm adding users daily. And taking them off, which is a little bit of a challenge. But some of those software, that is all part of the TransFinder suite, so this is our routing software, this is our GPS software. And this is our View Finder software that all of our schools are using um, to track our students. What I didn't put on here is on the district side, I also have access to something called Synovia, that's in conjunction with Hudson Bus Lines. And that labels me if a parent calls up and says, the bus missed me today, I can go right in and tell you exactly what time the bus was there down to the second. Or if the bus is indeed not there, so we do have some clever tricks up our sleeves to help with transportation. And alert parents when they should be out for the bus stop, um, and all of those things. Um, we did shut off the feature um, to allow stop to stop to stop because I could see people driving around the city to catch bus to bus to bus. So we have that off at the moment, but there's definitely things in there that are very, very useful. And we'll go to the next slide. Here are the numbers for transportation, article eight is actually a, just I think eight or nine lines and so these are kind of summarized together. You're going to see transportation personnel and so a lot of our increased drivers in there are obligatory costs, um, obligatory costs for. Increases in personnel stuff that we just have to do. Um, on the fuel side, you will see a slight decrease, did I lose vehicles? No, we are looking at public works. Um, we get our fuel from there, so when Hudson fills up a bus from there, they have a log, so we track it, if you see Hudson driving for Bates. We are not paying for Bates College, they are paying for that, so we have made sure that our fuel is going to our students. So we are fueling um, all of our big buses, our mini buses from Hudson, all of our vans, our district vans. Pretty much all the fuel maintenance has their own fuel, but we do have a fuel line where that goes, field trips, all of that. Usually I take a number, divide by, make some sweet guesstimates, but this year I was like, nope, we're not coming close to that. So this is more of a realistic approach to it and so hence the decrease, because when you do the fancy math, it actually does not work out and then it's over budgeted. So I wanted to be realistic on, we do have snow days where we don't operate, we do have blips in the system that we don't run everything. Um, so that's also in there as well. On transportation contracts, so this is yes, your Hudson contract line, but it also includes all the other contracts we have. And really it includes some other lines like out of district transport for our legal obligation for students that are required. Um, because of homelessness or experiencing homelessness and also this includes. Um, our special education lines and that would probably be one of our bigger increases as we bring students in district. We're seeing that decrease that we're able to put them on appropriate rides in district. But if a student because of their IEP or 504 requires specialized transportation. We go through our special education department and find the best um, solution for them, which may be a smaller vehicle, which has different cost parameters. So that's where you're going to see the majority of that increase. The other thing that is also in that line is that we did have grants available previously for our homeless transportation. And so these, um, this increase also includes our homeless transportation that we would be taking from those grants. Into our general fund because those grants are not available to the extent that we were hoping, if that changes, there would be a change. Non-salary expenses, that fancy software I was talking about, that really is my bread and butter, that if. Today you said we're not paying for it, I think I would go and cry because we were on Excel before with a lot of printing, sorry. But that's what we did, it was almost, uh, we were one step above a, a pin on a map, a pushpin with a string. That's the original way in the nineteen sixties, I found a map for transportation with Sharpie marks on the map, so this software. Um, was partially subsidized by the state of Maine, the state of Maine has relooked at their contracts with the, the company. And they said, we are not going to be paying for any software for any transportation, however, we're going to give some offset to your EPS funding formula. If it matches, not sure, but that's going to be in there for general fund usage, not necessarily for transportation. So the increase that you're seeing there for non-salary expenses um, is really coming down to. Software is a big driver, um, and then we have some other nuances in there, if you want to go to the next slide, Jake? Yes, so this kind of summarizes some of it, so we have our fuel cost in there and then we have that software as well that's influencing a lot as well. And again, this is a short little section and it's hard because this, this is my, like, this is a lot of work into this short, short little section. So I would definitely welcome any questions you guys might have.
Member Glenn.
Yes, um, the personnel, what is the personnel cost, can you explain that?
Um, I would probably be better fit to roll it over to our business, I, when I go through, um, I don't budget my own salary, I allow the districts to do that. And so we can have Bill come up and explain, but this would also include benefits lines, so he's going to do a better job.
No, it, it's, it's pretty simple, the personnel costs are just the three people that she mentioned in the very beginning. And so, you know, and that's just something to be aware of and Lewiston's such a big district and if you were to look at article eight, you would probably be like, what's going on here? Why are these lines shortened? It's because we sub out the bussing, so the personnel is only the staff that we have and that's three.
Yeah, thank you, yes, it is just the three and I think my administrative assistant, she's split, my salary is also split with nutrition. So really the only full-time employee for transportation is my assistant director. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have uh, facilities and maintenance and director Josh Bro will come to help present.
Yeah, good evening and I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be here to present, uh, provide this presentation for you folks as well. Um, thank you to Alyssa and Mark for setting the bar way over my head, keep your expectations low for facilities. We'll do our best, but we're, we're better not seen, not known, we just work in the shadows, we make things happen, we fix things, we clean things and you don't even know we're here. Usually we're only here if we didn't do something right. Most of the time, we get our kudos here and there. Um, so basically, uh, there is myself, the facilities director, Ray Roy, our facility supervisor, Rebecca Giroux is our administrative assistant. That we split with IT, she's awesome, uh, as is all our staff. Uh, we do have our maintenance team, we have an electrician, we have our maintenance staff, driver, sundry custodian, three maintenance folks, a driver, the sundry. Uh, sundry custodian, just for those that aren't familiar with that term, which I wasn't when I started here, that's a custodian that we have trained. To replace any head custodian in the district, should they need a day off, should they be out sick, anything like that, anytime they're out. That person goes in, fills in for them, so they have to be a master of all our buildings and jump into any building at any given time to take care of whatever's needed. Um, then we have the driver who moves things around the district, obviously, we have eight head custodians for eight buildings and forty-two custodians underneath those head custodians. You can take me to the next one. Um, some facility bright spots, um, since July first, um, the start of this fiscal year, July first of last year. Through March first of this year, we've completed seventeen hundred and thirty-five tasks requested by uh, folks across the district. We've performed eight hundred and fifty preventative maintenance tasks throughout that time as well, that number will continue to grow uh, up through June thirtieth. When we end this fiscal year and start the next one, uh, but that's kind of the things that we do. Um, I, I have a term, it's fairly inappropriate, but it's called the hallway mugging, that's when our folks are walking through a hallway and we have staff grab them. Uh, you saw it happen to Mark just a minute ago, um, so, um, that's what we affectionately call a hallway mugging, that isn't captured in here. That's the stuff that happens in the heat of the moment when a teacher comes running out of their hallway, sees a custodian, is like, I need your help right now and we drop what we're doing and we go take care of it. That's never captured here, it's affectionately called a hallway mugging. This is a fun one, on average, each custodian cleans twenty-four thousand five hundred square feet per day, which is the equivalent of twelve average sized houses. So if you think of how long it takes you to clean your house through the week with everything you have going, now try and clean twelve houses per day. That's what our custodian, uh, custodial staff does uh, on average. At LHS, we've invested a lot of money at LHS, it's uh, built in the early nineteen, early to mid nineteen seventies, I know we have a brand new wing over there, thirty thousand square feet of awesome space. But the rest of the building's fairly aged, we spent close to nine million dollars to improve ventilation and heating controls in that building. We had a very old and outdated control system that ran on pneumatics, that's ancient technology. If you ever went in the high school during the day and you got to just outside the library on the second floor and you look in the courtyard, you're going to see half the windows open. Not this winter, this winter we had a new control system in there, we kept temperatures at a pretty consistent level. And we've improved our ventilation through the entire uh, school, so huge win for, for LHS. Um, we've invested about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in playground equipment, that's bringing in new equipment through LCIP projects. Um, replacement of, of fixtures that failed. repair parts for fixtures that failed, but we've been investing in our playgrounds. I would say they need more money for sure. A lot of them are getting old, but so far to date this year, $150,000 spent to that. Bill, I'll give Bill most of the credit on this one, but we got thrown a pretty good curveball when we started planning climb last year. Very small window to renovate the day treatment wing of McMahon to turn it into that specialty program and bring those kids back and save that money for the school district. I don't know how we pulled it off, but somehow we did. I'll give most of the credit to Bill. That was pretty amazing to see how we were able to find contractors that are all super busy and booked out for years, some of them, and we were able to beg, borrow and steal people to get in there and get that done. And then we've been doing a lot of doors and infrastructure replacement at a lot of our buildings to improve how we access our building, how to keep people out that don't belong in our building and make sure our staff and students are as safe as they can. Specifically at our older buildings that are starting to have some equipment failures and issues like that. And we've, we've got more to come, but we've spent a lot of money doing a lot of good things for our doors to protect our buildings. You can take, here comes the big, this is where the cool stuff is. So I don't know if you can really make out what that is. Obviously it's a scoreboard and a backboard for the basketball hoop in the gym. This is at the high school. But what you may not realize is there's a very large air handler hanging up there. That's one of three that we replaced at the high school. That brings in ventilation air as well as heating and now cooling for the gym, sorry, dehumidification for the gym. So anybody who's ever been, well, everybody to my right, that goes to the, welcome to LPS for the new calendar year. We go into that room, this year it's going to be a lot cooler and a lot more comfortable, but it gets hot in there fast or used to. So we've, we fixed that for sure.
Does that mean summer basketball players aren't in a hundred degree gym with the doors open like?
At, at this building, yes.
Thank you.
And, and now at the, at the middle school as well, we did a project there that's not shown on here. But we did a project there where we brought in a new ventilation system, which has heating and cooling for the gym at the middle school as well. So that's new. But yeah, it was a known issue. I know Jason Fuller, I went to high school with Jason Fuller next door. My first day, he started begging me for air conditioning and I finally got it for him. So he has nothing left to beg for, for the rest of my time here. Not that he won't, but I won't give it to him. If you want to take it to the next slide. This is one of three typical air handler rooms on the top of Lewiston High School that we invested a lot of money in to improve our ventilation system for the entire building. There are some pockets in the building, like in the basement, that have small unit ventilators that serve just that space. But these rooms used to have one really big, old, very inefficient and worked not great air handler. Now each room has a supply and a return air handler that moves as much air as the ductwork will accommodate. For those that work at LHS, I do want to apologize. Most of that ductwork isn't insulated, so we couldn't really add cooling without having to change the entire ductwork and it was cost prohibitive. You'd have to basically tear everything down and build it back up. I would love to do that. We just don't have the time and money. But we did improve the ventilation for everybody through the building that is fed from these three mechanical penthouses. So that's what they look like today. They are clean, they're efficient. It's cutting edge technology. Everything's working pretty awesome there. So it's, it's a big win. So that's, I think, my last slide if I'm not mistaken. Let's see, I was going to say, oh, it's adult ed. It was LRTC earlier. So I did write some remarks and I apologize because I do prefer to talk and shoot from the hip and engage, but I found that I lose track of where I'm trying to get to. So I wrote it down this year. We'll see how that goes. I'm always learning, always making things better and I'm getting old, so apologize for putting my glasses on my head, but I need to read and I can't use my glasses. So before we jump into FY26, I wanted to inform you on some focus points from last year that we plan on keeping the momentum heading into the next fiscal year. We're really trying to improve communication in our department, between our departments, again, folks to my right, and then with the LPS educators and students. Communicating is our main goal, keeping people informed. There's nothing worse for a staff member to put in an incident ID request to get something fixed. We may know a part's going to be two weeks, but if we don't tell them that, they're living in the dark. Their heads filling with ideas of where are they? How come they're not fixing my things? Getting that information out there to say, "We're on this, but it's going to be two or three weeks before we get there." Just that piece of communication brings everything down a level and keeps everybody happy. Staying informed is huge and that's our main mission. As part of what we're trying to do and how we're trying to keep momentum going, I mimic Mark's idea from last year where he reorganized his team. For me this year, what we did was we modified our three maintenance positions to add some supervisory responsibilities to those folks, enabling them to become the leaders that they are for our entire district. We want these three employees to be additional faces for admin staff, educational staff to discuss the daily operations in our buildings and how facilities can better serve them. We want them working with our existing custodial teams to bring the level of consistency in buildings to be at or near the same level. If you go building to building, custodians do things different ways, their own ways. We've got three really intelligent, really smart maintenance folks who have no shortage of ideas and opinions on how to make our buildings look as good as they possibly can. We're going to work with our existing custodial teams, like I said. Basically it's just an extra set of eyes walking around the building, broadcasting who they are, why they're there and engaging with our staff to see what can we do better. This also helps us quality control because we have three, three guys that are tasked with making sure that everybody is coming up to the same level. So it should bring the quality of our schools to the same level. We've been working with our vendors to join cooperative buying groups to help assure that what we buy is being purchased at rates as low as possible. We did a large co-op with our primary cleaning company supplier or supplies company, Hilliard, and that's working out pretty slick for us right now. It basically guarantees us the best pricing we can possibly get. And I can assure you, they've told me at least 30 times, we have the best pricing in the state right now. So I'll, I'll take that as a win. We are continuing, continuing to do data-driven decision-making. Hilliard again is another great ally. They have a program that assesses all of our buildings. You put in the size of the space, what the finish is. It tells you how long to clean it based on the tools and the people you have available. So we're making informed decisions on how do we allocate our staff? How do we chop up our buildings? How do we clean them? Who does what, when? It's a lot easier than just drawing a circle or a box around something and saying, "That's where you go clean." Because it might take that person 10 hours and somebody else six. We're trying to keep everybody fairly balanced. Another big thing that we've been keeping the momentum going is improving training. We just recently sent most of the facilities team, which is myself, the maintenance guys, the electrician, people like that, down to Salem, New Hampshire. It's a facilities masters conference is what they call it. They do it annually. It falls the week after our school break when New Hampshire does their school break. New Hampshire puts it on. They do a great job. Lots of seminars, lots of vendor displays, lots of our cohorts that do the same thing that we do, all in one space. It's kind of weird, but pretty amazing too. But basically, send our folks down there. I grab what they learned. What did they bring back? We all go to different classes, see different things, come back and then we share that with our groups and try and bring that positivity that they bring back. It kind of re-energizes folks. It's amazing when you get somebody out of their school and you send them down to something like that and you invest time and money in making them better. The return on that investment when they come back and they, they broadcast that to the entire building that they left for that day. So those are awesome things. We're going to continue to add to the training schedule for all employees and again, use a collaborative approach for topics and ideas to review, to, to generate those training topics. All of those items I just reviewed help keep things exciting. I'm coming up on seven years at LPS. Based on the changes we've made, I've just described along with the team we have in place now. I'm farting, finally starting to get back to our primary focus of being proactive instead of reactive. As COVID hit, we had a very difficult time retaining our staff and hiring new qualified staff. We're finding, finally seeing some relief there. We're starting to get back to the normal levels that we're supposed to have. We were flying with one maintenance guy to manage all of the buildings for months at a time. Then we got to two and we just hired our third one. All three promoted from within the district, so they're not new to anything we've been trying to do. They're, to steal from Deb, champions of the facilities department and they are out there beating the drum and leading, which is outstanding. Heading into FY26, I, I made some changes on how I've approached the budget in compared to years past. For six years, I've tried to accommodate the needs of others and how they educate our students. We've modified offices, replaced carpets, replaced ceilings, done other cosmetic work in buildings. We've chopped offices into multiple offices to give people private offices and be able to talk to kids. We've done a whole bunch of that work for six years. That kind of came at my expense a little bit, or the facilities department expense. What we've tried to do this year in this budget, what I'm about to talk to you about, or you can send me your questions, is we really wanted to invest in facilities. So we, we took a hard look at, what's the age of our equipment? How efficient is it? What can we do to improve it? Can we get better? Can we get new? Can we make things go quicker to allow us to do more cleaning, more deep cleaning that we typically don't get to? Like I said, this includes investing money and replacing aged and failing equipment, replacing, this is a safety item, but replacing our AEDs district wide, that's a big one you'll see through my budget. Every school except for one or two have that. That's because those schools, their AEDs are not coming up on the end of life like most of the other ones. Most of the AEDs we're replacing came from a grant, I want to say, eight or 10 years ago, give or take. So they're about to age out. We're trying to stay ahead of that. But instead of just, again, data-driven decisions, did some research on AEDs. It would have been very easy and probably nobody would have questioned it if I would have just said, "We need to buy eight new ones." That's not good enough for me and it's not good enough for the district. So I did some research. I don't know if anybody's in the medical field or an expert on AEDs, but three minutes is what they expect you to be able to do. If you have a medical emergency, you need to be able to get to the AED and get back to where the medical emergency is within three minutes. I don't think we would have been able to do that in all of our buildings. So rather than just replace one for one, we're going to add several to certain buildings, especially a school like Lewiston Middle School. It's so spread out. There's no AED near the gymnasium. We want one by the auditorium and then we'll probably put one up on the third floor. That three minutes is worst case scenario. So picture a school when the bell rings and all of the kids dump out of their classrooms and start heading to their next class and you need to find your way to an AED and back to your medical emergency in three minutes. So again, data-driven decisions, not just replace one for one. How many more do we need to make us as effective as we can be? We also have some aging facility-related items like sinks that are failing. Sewer lift station at Geiger needs some love. We've got stage curtains and dividers, kind of like what you see back here. Few of those need some repairs. Those are things that we've put off for the betterment of the staff in the buildings, but it's time this year to be a little bit selfish and invest back into the facility side of things. I did hear, you know, we want to try and keep the budget as flat as we possibly could. That's challenging in facilities. I want all the money you can send me. I want to do everything I possibly can, but I know that's not realistic. But that's what we strive to. Some of the things I did to try and make the budget stay as flat as I could is I went as aggressive as I possibly could on utilities, cut anything I possibly could from water, sewer and natural gas. Electricity basically stayed flat. Some went up, some went down based on historical usage and, and cost. So kind of a net even there, but everything else dropped. So we did that. We did have some cost increases. Salaries was a big one. We were very under, underfunded when it came to overtime. We, we do put in a lot of overtime, supporting our buildings, doing after-school activities, cleaning up after, doing, coming in on weekends. That all hits the overtime line. Those were typically negative for going years back. So I made some adjustments to those, insurance costs, debt services. Those are things that kind of raised my budget up a little bit. So that's, that's all I have as far as what I wanted to say, but I'm happy to put my glasses on and see you all again and answer any questions.
Remember Ian?
I have some vague memory of a 20%, was it savings on a solar source for our electricity?
Yeah.
Is that figured in here or is that in the future sometime or what?
That, that's in here.
So we realized that savings in this year's budget as well. So you will notice if you go through your budget, you'll see some of the electricity items are up, but that's because we got a rate increase on our, on our contract. But that solar kind of helped offset that, so.
And as those, some of those big shiny slides that were in my presentation before with that big equipment, some of that stuff is new, especially the cooling in the gymnasium at the high school, the new unit that provides ventilation, heating and cooling at the middle school. Those are new electrical loads we didn't have before. So we have to plan accordingly for those.
Remember Heard?
Thank you. So I just wanted to say I'm really happy to hear, after when you were talking about like group procurement, because I think that is where we're going when procuring certain services, products or whatever. So I'm hoping that kind of spreads to the rest of the district in different areas. I know Alyssa, we had kind of talked about a little bit of that with nutrition, which we kind of already do, but anytime we can get the best rate or the best price, I think we should be doing that. And so group, group procurement does offer that as an option. So I'm really happy to hear about that.
We, we do our best to try and maximize our dollars as best we can. But I'm going to be honest with you, we, we don't go with the lowest cost. We, we look for what's in the middle. I don't need the best price, you know, highest price, best thing. I definitely don't want the lowest price, worst thing. We shoot for what's going to work best for us and how economically can we buy that, or you know, how efficiently can we buy that, I should say, to, to work on economics.
All right. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
We're going to take a brief five-minute recess.
Uh, we will now continue with agenda, um, budget item article 10. Is that where we are right now? Article 10.
So I, I'll, I'll just walk through the items from tonight, but obviously I'll go pretty quickly because of other things that have been shared already. But if you have questions, please just let us know. So article six, which uh wasn't presented tonight per se, uh has some contractual increases and insurance costs. But just as a reminder, this includes human resources, our business office, my office, um, all of you who are underpaid, uh, and our clerical staff, uh, but people like me, Bill, Sue, uh Karen are all part of this. Uh, we have, uh, you see the, the chart here that we've shared in the past for each uh different item. Um, and just as a, as a note from a system administration perspective, uh, there's some things that we did last year, um, in and around, uh, trying to recover from the mass shooting. Some of those things were donations, some of those things were local decisions. So it had a bit of an impact on some things, but we also realized some, some actual costs. And so there's, there's the chart there. And then I did the same thing, or Bill helped me with the uh percent increase. And you can see the, the growth over last year and the reduction over last year. The dollar increase, you can see the um $24,500 change in personnel. The, the growth in contracted services and then again the non-salary. And then that third view of present increase overall in the budget. It's a 0.02% increase, a 0.04% increase and and obviously a 0% increase because it's in the negative for the non-salary. And article eight, um, Alyssa touched on, touched on that with some detail. Um, I'll just kind of move through. If you have questions again, please stop me. Um, you can see that that overall increase and much of that is the transportation contract and the other components that she pointed out. You can see that represented by a percent increase. This slide, you see the dollar increase. Again, that big number, the transportation contract. And then the overall compared to the budget as a whole. Article nine, this is what Josh just spoke about. Uh, he, he uh did a good job with with the, the things that we asked him as far as how we stay as flat as possible. Uh, or, or retract in certain areas. And uh you can see the overall difference from last year to this year of 581. And that had some shuffling and also some utility pieces. Uh, big one here that I don't want to lose too much time on, but that bottom one that says debt service. There are facilities related debt service, and then there's some other, other areas of debt service, but this is the stuff we talk about when we look at revenues. Um, but when you see the difference of 144,000, that's different debts that we incur connected to things like new LCIP or uh new funded projects or um city-approved projects. That, that can land in article nine for a facilities perspective. Here you have the percent increase. Uh, and then insurance, school, you see the jump. Uh, Bill, I hope I say this right, but under facilities, it's the building-based insurance costs. So we, we do have insurance for our buildings and that, that is up. And I, I heard at one point in time that some of this is going to impact all of us in, in every pocket because of things like uh massive storms, hurricanes, fires out west that insurance premiums across the board are going to tick up. And here you can see again the percent increase of the overall budget. In article 10, that is uh essentially the, the debt service piece. Uh, and it's similar to last year down due to timing of debt service for state-approved projects. Uh, and it also corresponds to state revenue. So when you see revenue components in the, the revenue sheet or subsidy that is connected to debt service, uh, that's reflected here. And um it's again down 462,969. Article 11 is always our fastest article. Um, we have, it's up about $5,000 based on some cost increases. Um, but also that's our crossing guard invoicing and that's connected to city. Schools can't pay for crossing guards directly, but we can be invoiced for the service. It's got something to do with road certifications. Um, it works fine. It doesn't cost us extra. It just has to go through the city and then we get invoice. So that's what article 11 represents, all other things that don't land in any particular spot. And that's where it lands. The next items we have uh are LRTC, our, our tech, career technical education areas. Uh, you'll see some increases there. Remember that's tied to subsidy and there's there's that delicate line between uh what we don't spend and we will lose and what we spend and what we can afford. Uh, Lewis Adult Education will present and they came in flat, um, with, with some commitment to fund balance, which exists and lives outside of the general fund fund balance. Uh, and then I put other on here because uh we have had a conversation with a person about special ed and what might help. And she's working on that. So hopeful to be able to share some things along those lines on Monday. Any questions about those articles? Tonight's are pretty straightforward, so. That's it for budget tonight.
All right. Uh, agenda item number eight is to review and potentially vote on the first read of policies. DIDA, DN, DJH and EFDB. Did you want to give any explanation of any of it or?
No?
Okay. Uh, I don't think there's a lot to give, to give an explanation on. Um, the policies. The policies from um section D, which mostly deal with finance. Thank you. Um, we're, some of them were just updated, um slight, slight adjustments. And then um the school nutrition policy, that one was very outdated and needed to be, needed to be updated. And Alyssa and I had been working, um, working through that as member Glenn um spoke on that. So uh this is a first read. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Member Heard?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first read of the following policies listed A through D.
Second that. Any questions, comments? All in favor? It is unanimous. Agenda item number nine is to receive and potentially vote on the 25, 26 school year calendar.
So a couple of big talking points about the school calendar for next year. Um, it's been an ongoing conversation around when will Eid land in our school calendar? Because it's based on the lunar phase and the sighting of the lunar phase. What we have come to find over time is that, that very often lands on a calendar predicted date based on the lunar cycle. So we had the idea of meeting with local community leaders. We met with uh multiple imams, came together as a group and said, for a year, we would like to try setting the date. So people can plan around it for after-school activities, for daycare during the day, things of that nature. Uh, and they said, yes, let's try it. And so we formulated a calendar around that with dates not as could be, but as actual dates for Eid. Uh, next year there happens to be uh two during the school year. And one of them lands uh on Wednesday after Labor Day. Excuse me, Memorial Day. Make the clear, in May, in the spring. Uh, and so what that creates is no school Monday. Could be school Tuesday and then no school Wednesday as a set date. And in around that time of year, um, I think it was Karen that had the original idea of moving the teacher exchange day, which typically happens in March to that day in May, and it would just create a long weekend instead of coming back for a day and then going back out for a day. Uh, the association seemed to be in favor of that. We've bounced around administrators and they were in favor of that. It is a shift. Uh, so the day would move from March to May and it would create essentially a five-day weekend on a holiday instead of a three-day weekend, a day in and a day back out. Uh, so that's, those are the changes that you see in the calendar. And just as a reminder, and I shared in the memo, but uh these calendars are built around the region and they have to be approved by the state. The state has given a preliminary yes, and this has gone back now to all of our six districts. Uh, us and five others for local approval. And if approved, it would meet the expectations for our region.
Questions, comments? Member Heard?
I don't have a question. Um, but I was really happy to see that none of our early release Wednesdays were on the same day as a holiday or vacation or something. And I feel like I was like, I say it a lot and I feel like I was being really annoying, but apparently it worked because I'm glad that, to see that this year.
Well, I don't think you've been annoying. I think we're trying to take that input and look at how do we maximize those, those more full week times. Um, and so we did that where we could. And the other thing that Karen just mentioned to me in this calendar is a move of a workshop day from an end of year to the start of year, which would give teachers another day to get their classrooms ready. And that is the intention because we kept hearing from them, we need another day to get ready. And we have found that the day at the end of the year is uh people are tired and, and it speaks to the production we see or, or maybe don't see in those days. So uh moving to the start of year, I think is helpful. Do you want to add something?
I'll just add one more thing about the early release. Yes, you were heard, Megan. Um, remember heard. Um, and that we realized that um our early release and Auburn, the high school early release were opposite, are on different Wednesdays, which caused a problem with LRTC. It was one of those things like what, why didn't we, why didn't we realize this before? So wh- what we did was we, Auburn always had them on the first Wednesday of the month for their high school because their high school only has early release once a, once a month, while the rest of the, the district um elementary has it every Wednesday. Uh, so we moved them to the first Wednesday to be in alignment with, with um Auburn as well, which allowed students to have more time in their LRTC classes, which just helps them get their certifications and all of those things. So that was another reason for the, the shift.
Member McGliffen?
Can you just remind me what the difference is from a teacher exchange day and a teacher workshop day?
Yep. The, the teacher exchange day is actually a day off for teachers and it's in, in compromise of the nights that they work for parent-teacher conferences. So instead of paying people additional hours, we swap out one day later in the year.
Maybe I'm hmm misinterpreting this, but did we use a teacher exchange last day for a snow day? Like it's, it's very interchangeable kind of of what we can do with it.
So we don't use it for a snow day. Kind of. And this gets logistically messy because what we can do is we move the exchange day to the end of the year and then have school. And so uh it can be frustrating, I think, to teachers because their exchange day is the day that might otherwise have felt like they already had off. But really it would be a workday with students if we didn't do it in March. So we have to notify the association, uh, I believe by the end of January, if we intend to do that. Um, and so when we do that, we bring that to you uh for your approval, uh, but it does move that day. So last year, for example, to not continue to spill further into June, we used that day in March. And then in June, on a piece of paper, there's a day for their exchange.
Member Bowden?
Thank you. Um, I just want to thank you for working with um the community to figure out a more consistent calendar um for Eid and taking that time off. I know there are going to be a lot of families that are like very happy to, to know ahead of time for childcare purposes. Um, which is why it was brought up to begin with. Um, but I also want to ask, in the off chance that Eid doesn't fall on the day that we assigned it to, um, what happens then?
So, and that could happen and we did discuss that. Um, so Lewis Public Schools will still, still take the calendar day as that recognition. And if families, if it falls before or after, uh, they will take that respective day uh for themselves and will excuse it. But it will keep us from being in uh like this year, we have a tricky situation. I think right now we're scheduled to be out on the 16th of June. Uh, doing my fact check here to my left, um, which is a Monday with students. And that is with two days for Eid built in and both of the Eid days scheduled this spring could fall on a weekend and could fall during the week. One by a calendar, which is not seeing the lunar cycle, um, is on a Saturday and the other one's on a Sunday. If those land there, our last day of school will actually move back two days because those wouldn't be non-school days because it lands on a weekend. So there's benefits to picking the date and also I think clarity for families who have expressed, and you all have expressed too, the challenge of not knowing, will there be school tomorrow when it's, you know, not inclement weather or things like that?
So if it falls on a weekend, we're not going to observe it during the week on a day where we're going to let them observe it on the actual day on the weekend.
Right on. So on, in this year's calendar, it could fall both of them this spring on weekend days, which will not impact school.
School days are already signed off. Didn't we already pick one?
So we didn't pick days this year. They're just in there as tentative.
That's what I meant. Those are, well, those, so those would not be days off. Correct.
If it, so whenever Eid lands is the day that will be recognized. We just won't know what that day is. So for, for example, the one that's supposed to land on Saturday could land on Friday is what I've been told. And the one that lands on Sunday could actually land on Monday. It's, it's like a 48-hour swing. And so this year we're just, we'll wait for the notice and we'll let people know. But if it lands on Saturday or Sunday, uh, it will be recognized by families on Saturday or Sunday. There'll be no interruption to school. Uh, and we also got very reassured by uh local imams that families do not need two, three and multiple days to celebrate. Eid is one day, one day, one day. And so we've heard from some students over the years that, oh, my family does it for three days. It's, well, it might be a family obligation, but it's not the actual holiday. So.
So with assigning the day, let's say that's like around Wednesday. Um, if it happens to fall on Tuesday or Thursday, then the students will take either Tuesday or Thursday off and there'll be no like repercussions, there'll be excused absence. That Wednesday will still be a day off regardless.
Correct. So we can schedule around it. And I do want to emphasize that this is a one-year trial. We want to try it and then reflect on it because if it, if it works and we can continue to do this, uh, which many other districts do, by the way, the ones who do recognize Eid, they pick a day. And it's really about those logistics. But to your point, yes, if it, if we book Wednesday, Wednesday will be a no school day. Everyone will know it's in the calendar. Uh, but if it falls on Tuesday or Thursday, it'd be no penalty to the, to the students who are not in school.
And then as far as staff, if a staff member is out because they're observing Eid, um, do they have to use their leave time? I know we've had some back and forth on this in the past.
Varies by contract and what's negotiated.
Okay. Yep, member Bowden?
Um, so my last question is, um, if the region approves this, um, are they also going to adopt the same calendar or are they not going to adopt Eid onto their calendar?
No, we had to have a conversation with the state about having the two Eid days waived. And because of our um demographics and the need for that, it would have created too many dissimilar days. But they granted the waiver knowing that we just have such a large population of students that are connected to that, that forcing us to have schools on that day would just be what we did in the past and have, you know, half-empty schools. So the state did say once it gets approved by all the regions, it still has to be formally adopted, but we've already talked to them about the waiver for those two days and they've already agreed.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion, member Eames?
Just to thank you. Just to thank you for working it out.
Member Heard?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 school calendar.
Seconded by member McGliffen. Uh, all in favor? It is unanimous. Uh, agenda item number 10 is report from the chair. Um, I just wanted to give a reminder that um next Monday's meeting, I will not be here. Um, and so you guys will get to go through the uh the new chair pro tem process when you start the meeting on Monday. Um, so that'll be fun. Um, agenda item number 11 is report from the school superintendent.
Uh, just a couple of items. I'm sure there's 30, but um there was an article recently about the Montello music uh program, getting some supports and funding and some, some money's trickling into that to get students instruments and access to uh some better equipment. So we're, we're very excited about that. Um, and also uh there's been an effort in partnership around um hard-of-hearing students. Um, we've, we've had some students that require different services. And so um we did not realize, but we're learning quickly that if we can arrange for a space to be provided, which we're working to do, uh, the, I'm going to get this wrong. Baxter. Should just look. Uh, the organization in Maine that uh does particular work around this actually has funding connected to providing equipment, resources, staffing and other layers of support. So we are it's not pine tree. Um.
Baxter School for the Hard of Hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
I wrote a memo about it, but I decided to do it as an update. So this is, she's referring to the memo that you don't have. So just want to let you know that that, that effort could actually save us a fair amount of money because when we can't provide those services in-house, working collaboratively with a partner, we have to send students elsewhere to get the services. And I think it's a disservice to the students, but also quite expensive. And so this should provide us another one of those layers of cost savings. The challenge is space and we're working with Farwell on that. And it's the main educational center for the deaf and hard of hearing, Governor Baxter School for the Deaf. This is why I couldn't remember all of it. But they do have funding to support efforts like this. One caveat that we may find is that students from our immediate region, from other schools, may also access those supports. I don't believe there'll be full-time students and there's not a lot of students that require the service. But to have it more regionalized will be a good thing. So we're, we're working on that project. That's it for now.
Agenda item number 12 is report from our city council rep.
Thank you. City council, like school committee is going through the budget right now. So that's consuming most of our time. I'd like to let people know about a couple of things coming up this Saturday. From 10 to about 2, the city council is having a sort of a strategic retreat. It's at Callahan Hall at the library. There isn't a, there isn't a specific section for, for public comment, but it is a public meeting. People are welcome to come and observe. And then the other thing is the newly hired city administrator, Brian Canrath, is holding at least three public meet and greets before he starts at the beginning of, of May. And the first one is coming up next week, next Thursday, the 27th at 5:00 PM at the Chickadee. And then I'll let, I'll announce the other two as they get closer. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Number 13 is updates from any subcommittees. Member Bowden?
Yep. So we are into our negotiations with the ed tax. And we are next week opening up negotiations with our nutrition contract. So that's all I have for subcommittees.
Any other subcommittees with updates? Doesn't look like it.
So just a quick update from us. We've looked at a rotation of meetings on nights that we think people will be able to make it. And you, you may start to see some things pop up in your calendar, but we're looking at getting those in front of you and shared. And we're also trying to make sure that committees that may have a, a teacher interest are not on like Wednesday afternoons when they have professional development. So we're, we're navigating those. So you should see them start to pop up and we'll get them in front of you soon.
Agenda item number 14 is community announcements. Member Eames?
I was trying to find it. You could go to the public library and find it. I just didn't do it in time. There is a fundraiser mystery, you know, one of those dinner mystery, murder mystery events coming up. We're fundraising for the children's library, the big, the big push to get new funding for the children's library. So I just wanted to mention that, but I'm sorry, I don't have the date.
Thank you. Member Bowden?
Thank you. I don't, I don't know the outcome, but I know that Skills USA just happened over the weekend. Maybe you could speak on that because I think a lot of our kids brought home some medals. So.
It was the, the best outcome we've ever had. We had more students competing than we've ever had before, and the outcomes were fantastic. I have a whole spreadsheet of them and we are slated to recognize them at our, our first April meeting. I'll also let a little bit of information out, but we can act surprised that day. Rob Callahan was named the Skills USA, I think it's Cornerstone, Cornerstone Director of the Year. So a solid recognition for, for a really good colleague. So we'll get him in front of us and try to embarrass him.
And the robotics team performed this weekend and they came in second in, in some category. I, I saw it. I read it. It was great. I don't remember exactly what it was.
Robotics did great. They qualified for the, the regionals in New England's. And I anticipate that we may see a couple of different groups of students before us, probably on Monday, if we can figure out some logistics on their, their costs. But they may be asking you for some financial support to compete nationally.
Any other community announcements? Agenda item number 15 is for future agenda items. Member Galant?
Do we have any updates on the grant that was funded for homelessness students? Do we, have they hired anybody?
Navigator position through community contacts?
Yes, we have someone in that position. The person is someone that's familiar to the partner organization and actually has already started helping families. I believe there's one or two families already that have been supported in finding housing. So through the, through the program, but we can definitely get you a more formal update. I can ask Natasha and Jenny Derrigan to, to, to bring some more information back to you.
Agenda item number 16 is to enter into executive session to conduct a student A disciplinary hearing title 20A10019 and title 14056B.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? School committee is in executive session at 7:35 PM.